Recording in progress.
Good morning, everyone. We will go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the table outside as well as on our website. There is also an automatic external defibrillator that is available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Today, we are honored to have our corrections color guard present to present the colors today, so I would ask that we all stand.
Aye, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands the Foundation of American Communism of the United States of America.
Order, off. Right, face. Mark time, march. Forward, march. Mark time, march. Argard, all, right, face. All out.
Thank you very, very much. With that, we will begin today with the Douglas County Board of Commissioners and do one agenda item and then recess and go back to the original agenda. So with that, could we have roll call for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners?
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. He's traveling today. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Present. We will do the one presentation. It is a presentation and approval of the Douglas County participating in NACO's Operation Green Light Initiative. And today, we have our Douglas County Veteran Service Officer with us, Benson Elmore, and he's going to read the resolution for us.
Benson Elmore, Director of Douglas County Veteran Service Office, Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska. Whereas the residents of Douglas County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas, the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining their freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas, Douglas County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas, veterans continue to serve in our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas, approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas, studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas, active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas, the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas, this board appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that with designation as a Green Light for Veterans County, this board hereby declares from November 7, 2022 through November 13, 2022, as a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our former service members and the men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, this board hereby encourages its residents, in patriotic tradition, to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in the window of their residence or place of business this day, first day of November, 2022.
Thank you, Benson. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Friend. I do want to, at this time, ask for any veterans that are in the room to please stand and be recognized. Thank you very much for your service. And Benson, do you want to, before I turn it over, just kind of give a synopsis of the things we're going to be doing on Green Light, Operation Green Light in the county?
Absolutely. It's my first thank you to the board and Madam Chair and Chief Administrator for Douglas County. It's always difficult for me sometimes to remember that I am a veteran, retired from the Air Force because we continue to serve. But it's difficult to kind of put into words and actions how to recognize and thank veterans, you know, for their service, those who've lost loved ones. So Operation Green Light is kind of a way for us to do that. We're asking residents and businesses to shine a green light in their residence or their business to recognize and honor veterans through November 7 through the 13th. It's a small part that we can do. You know, obviously, our appreciation should extend beyond that, but this is the best way in terms of how we can honor and recognize veterans and thank them for their service. NACO's at the forefront of this, and it's truly valuable to us, even for me as a veteran. And in a specific note, there's always a foundation and pillar of support, a catalyst for that. And so, me specifically, ma'am, Madam Chair, I thank you for your support. It's unwavering, it's authentic, and it's unmatched. So as a veteran and on behalf of veterans, we thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Benson. Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Benson, I want to thank you again, and I think I've said this before, I sound like a broken record. The thing that I appreciate and I think some people lose sight of is when, Commissioners, please forgive me, but when my son joined the Army, he actually asked me, he told me, he didn't ask me, he said, "I'm joining the Army," and I said, "Well, I think that's a great idea." What I think my wife and my daughters didn't understand is they wouldn't see him again for a long time. So it doesn't mean he's been deployed, it doesn't mean he's fighting in a war, but he's in Fairbanks, Alaska, and they haven't seen him for two years. And now he's going to Fort Benning, and we're not going to see him for another year. So what I don't, he's not a veteran, but he will be, and what I don't think people probably really get a grasp of is a lot of people's kids are living around town, or they're 500 miles away from here, and they see him every Thanksgiving, they see him every Christmas. They didn't see you guys. I mean, you were gone. And it's tough, but I want to thank you for your service. I want to thank everybody in this room for their service who did serve, and I wish I understood what it was like, but I think I get a little bit of a feeling. So, thank you again, and thanks for coming in here, and we appreciate it.
Anyone else? Again, thank you. And Benson, the businesses thus far that we have, besides our courthouse, will be lit up, which I'm like totally excited about. What are the other ones that we have?
We have some, we have Centrus Credit Union, we have Veridian, we have PayPal, we have the Jean Lee Hay, the Arkway being lit up, the bridge being lit up. We have a number of different, we have some other counties too that are participating. I won't speak to what they're doing, but obviously, the courthouse, and there's many different businesses that we've reached out to. We've got an overwhelming support from, you know, the community, from residents, to include, we have the fountain that's going to be lit up. We've reached out to other businesses like Bridges Trust and so on and so forth, but we have a number of different businesses that have, for lack of better terms, said, "Hey, we're going to do this. We appreciate it. We want to honor veterans." You know, even the mid-crown tossing billboard is going to be lit up with our information to help veterans, help people understand how to, you know, honor veterans during Operation Green Light. So we have a strong support from the community. And going forward, we anticipate the support will get any stronger, and this operation will continue.
Well, I want to thank you and your staff for pulling together our first, and hopefully annually, annual Operation Green Light activities. And as you said, they will grow. I did get word that Bally will light up their area as well for us during that time. And so I'm sure we'll get others as we go along here, but this is a shout out to everybody. If you haven't yet committed to turning green, turn green during that week.
Indeed.
But again, thank you for all you've done for this, and thank you for your service. And thank, again, everyone here and our color guard for presenting our colors today. Definitely appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
We will now, if I could get a motion to recess out of Board of Commissioners and go back to Board of Equalization?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Friend. Please vote.
One moment, please. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Rogers is currently absent, but motion passes five to zero.
Now we'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Like I said earlier, Commissioner Rogers is temporarily absent right now, and Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, October 25, 2022. And Item B, call for a meeting set Tuesday, November 22, 2022, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next, our citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to resolution. Item D, approving application for tax exemption Form 457 on motor vehicles. Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments?
Madam Chair, if I may, I, did you want to take, I know the agenda's kind of split up a little bit, but did you want to do D and F at the same time?
Oh, yeah, sure we can. Thanks. Approving the application for tax exemption Form 453 on motor vehicles as well. Does the motioner and seconded okay with that? So approval of resolutions D and F. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next is a public hearing, resolution correcting the tax rates approved on October 18, 2022 in accordance with Nebraska Statute 771601. Joe Lorenz, our finance director, is presenting this. Do you have anything to add to it?
I don't. Maybe Diane?
Diane Carlson, Deputy County Administrator. These were corrections that came to the clerk's office's attention from other subdivisions. They, this board previously approved the, and certified the tax levies from all the subdivisions, and some corrections were found. And so pursuant to statute, these corrections may be made by the board.
Okay, this is the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak during the public hearing?
Madam Chair, if I may, madam, another comment. D and S County Clerk. So just so people are aware, on these three political subdivisions, their total tax rate is not changing from before. It was just either the breakout of their levy needed to be adjusted or the names of the funds needed to be changed. So if anyone's watching and wondering if their tax rate's going to change from what was approved on the 18th, that overall, it's not. It's just some things in the breakouts that had to be corrected.
All right. With that, I will close the public hearing. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
We don't have need for an executive session, so do I have a motion to adjourn out of Board of Equalization and go back into Board of Commissioners? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
We're back into the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, October 25, 2022. And Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, November 15, 2022. Is there a motion to approve A and B?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next is our consent agenda, items A through G. There is a request to lay over item G until our next meeting. So that would be an approval of A through F and laying over item G until, is it 22nd? Till November 22nd. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please, oh, Commissioner Boyle, sorry.
So I just wanted to make the point that I have, I had pulled off Agenda Item A, which was talking about the Douglas County Sheriff's Department and the Millard Public School District School Resource Officers. I was finally able to receive the information I was looking for, and it seems like the county at the moment is being compensated pretty closely to what it could be. So just want to make the point that I appreciate the work that Chief Deputy Hudson took to get me the information so I could make an informed decision. Just to make it clear, I'm very supportive of SROs. This was all a finance decision. We're up against a lot of, up against the gun and the budget as far as it goes. So we're just trying to wash these things, and I just want to see and make sure that the county is able to get reimbursed for services provided. So I appreciate the work that it took to do that, and I also want to encourage that to continue to occur in the future because of budget shortfalls that could be happening. So, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, there was a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next, we're moved to recognition and proclamations. We have one, resolution declaring Saturday, November 26, 2022, as Small Business Saturday, recognizing the important role that small businesses play in the well-being of our communities and our economy. And we've passed this resolution in the past years, and I can't believe we're already upon November, but it is that time again. So I'll just read it real quick. Whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, 32.5 million small businesses exist across the U.S., employing nearly 61.2 million Americans. And whereas, small businesses represent 99.9% of all businesses in the U.S., accounting for 46.8% of our entire workforce. And whereas, funded by American Express in 2010, and officially co-sponsored by the Small Business Administration since 2011, Small Business Saturday, the Saturday following each Thanksgiving holiday week, has become an important part of small businesses, shopping seasons contributing millions annually in revenue to our economy. And whereas, this year, Saturday, November 26, 2022, is Small Business Saturday, the day to celebrate and support small businesses and all they do for their communities. And whereas, Douglas County celebrates our local small businesses and contributions they make to our region, creating jobs, boosting our local economy, and preserving our communities. And whereas, Douglas County and all counties encourages residents to join and support organizations across the country to promote our local small businesses by shopping at independent retailers and manufacturers, and to patron local restaurants, coffee shops, and the like during November and throughout the year. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby declares Saturday, November 26, 2022, as Small Business Saturday, and we encourage our residents to recognize the important role that small businesses play in the well-being of our communities to support local by shopping at our small business dated this first day of November, 2022. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next, our citizen comments. Anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Good morning.
Morning.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. First of all, I want to complain once again about the sound system. I can hear the speaker back, the speakers back there. These speakers I cannot hear. This has been going on for quite a while, and I've even sent an email to you folks about it. Taxpayers expect that to get fixed. Thank you. Secondly, with Veterans Day and the election and then Christmas, I want to divulge off onto sort of my same topics. Within the last week or two, I was told that a 501(c)(3) organization could not say anything political, but there's no definition of what is or what is not political. Now, last week, the chairman, excuse me, made a comment that left me to believe she was commenting maybe to me, and she didn't give me a chance to reply or anybody else. But she was saying, implying that the ongoing violence around this nation is by those people that wear a hat like this or believe that there are some irregularities with our election last time. There are millions and millions of people that believe there are, that are quite a few different documents and presentations that say there were, and even our own Secretary of State denies it and will not answer questions about the statistics on our own election in Douglas County and the state of Nebraska, which has irregularities. Secondly, the idea that something is political or not, discussing the Constitution and discussing 501(c)(3)'s inability by some people that tell them they cannot say something political without defining that, is against the Constitution. There are a lot of 501(c)(3)'s that come down here, and they say some things that are considered by a lot of people political, and they get by with it. I'm going to hand out or submit some evidence to you. One is from globalfaith.org website. And the other is your personal copy of the United States Constitution. This topic, you may call me out of order on, but the dictionary, the college edition of the dictionary defines Muslims as all the people who follow Islam, the doctrine of Islam, and those who follow those doctrines and practices. If anybody's done any research on the political aspects of Islam, they know it's kind of evil, and it's against our Constitution, but they are inserting themselves into our government, and that's unconstitutional. I'm sorry, Chris, you need to read. You need to pay attention to the news. Shake your head at me. Don't reply to me while I'm here, okay? That's your rule. There were no Muslims before Muhammad. Muhammad was a poet, called himself a prophet, and says he rode off to a farmhouse that didn't exist. Yes, he wants to tie themselves to the Abrahamic faith, but that doesn't make it a true religion. It is a political system, not a true religion, but yet we let them talk, don't we? We let them wear their garb, and that garb that they wear is tied to a lot of violent acts. Mary Ann, you said yourself last week that this stuff with violence has to stop, but you haven't not told Black Lives Matters or Antifa or the Islamic followers that are all over Omaha now to stop their violence. The insinuation was, these are the people that are violent, but you're being told that by the news. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
D and S, Douglas County Clerk. Sometimes I don't know what the best approach is. So I guess I'll try this. So I remember one time, and Larry, I am, so you know, so you're not speculating, I am talking about you. One time I saw you at the top of the escalator on Farnham. I was coming down from LC, and there was a family, and it was not a white family, they were looking for vital stats. They were trying to find a birth certificate. And Larry could kind of tell they were lost, and so Larry, I thought he gave them pretty good, clear directions on where to go, and they still weren't following. So Larry took them, walked them to the vital stats office. And so sometimes I think to myself, why does he choose to show us this and not that? he choose to show us this and not that? I just, I don't, and then he comes up here and says Islam is evil. I mean, how is that helping? So I think Mr. Store is, he's demonstrated to me on plenty of occasions, he's a good person. I just don't get why he comes up here and says the things that he says. So.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to committees. The first being the finance, excuse me, the Finance Committee, our budget report as presented. And we do have one action item. It is an ARPA funding. It's approval of a resolution authorizing the award of $300,000 to the nonprofit Nebraska Center for Workforce Development and Education to assist in funding the construction of the Nebraska Museum of Industry and Labor, which will be devoted to the history of Nebraska's workforce and serve as a catalyst for economic development and job creation in Douglas County. This is allocation is from Commissioner Morgan's allocation of ARPA funds. And with that, I'll ask for a motion.
Okay, and I will make the motion for this worthwhile project on 60th, I-80, and maybe ask Mike McDonald to come down.
I will, but I need a second first. Okay, motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers. Go ahead and continue.
No, I think Mike will, State Senator McDonald will discuss this. And I was asked kind of late to participate, and I think it's most worthwhile.
Okay, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Mike McDonald, M-I-K-E-M-C-D-O-N-N-E-L-L, 6001 Grover Street. I'm representing Legislative District Five today as a state senator. I'm also representing the Omaha Federation of Labor as their president. Jim Vecchio, if you've met in the past, is the CEO. He has a family commitment today. That's why he is not here. We appreciate every dollar. And what we're trying to do in honor of the past, learn from the past, but we're also trying to look at a partnership going forward. And that partnership started in 1941 between the AFLCO and the United Way of the Midlands. And we've built on that since. And with the Nebraska Center that started in 2018, we're trying to educate kids in junior high about the trades. And something that, you know, you can, if a person has a dream to be a doctor, an architect, they should go to college. But there's also ways to be very successful without going to college. And we believe the trades are that path. Trying to promote that. And then also, we're trying to tell people that have had, made some terrible decisions. And for crime, we don't believe there's any excuses, but there is reasons. So people have made dumb decisions. They have served their time, and now they're back into society and try to reduce recidivism. We think we can do that through educating them about the trades and encouraging them to be part of the labor movement. What we're trying to do with these dollars, and we've had, we have private partners, we have the labor movement raising money, we have the state, which we have received money from the state, or we're slated to receive money from the state. And I wish Commissioner Kavanaugh was here today, and we can have this discussion in the future, because that's our, the district that it's his, it's his district. And it's on 60th and Grover. We're looking at the south side of the property. And we had an agreement of $750,000. And that was going to come out of his allocation. That agreement was not followed through. We do appreciate the $100,000 and the $50,000 from Commissioner Garcia. But this is why we're here today. Based on the idea that we still are looking at the $750,000, we appreciate Commissioner Morgan stepping forward from his allocation and helping us out. We are going to be coming back. We're going to be coming back and asking to try to get to that number. And again, as everyone knows about the workforce, everybody knows about the supply chain and what's happened with the economy and where we are right now with prices, and things have gone up. And we are now in a situation where we need to get to our fundraising, which we think we can get there with your help. We think what's going to happen with the center, with the museum for industry and labor, but also with the idea of being able to give people an opportunity to get jobs and make sure that they're good paying jobs with full benefits, that it's going to make a difference for them and their families going forward. I'm here to answer any questions, and I will be back. Again, I'm not representing the center. That's Jim Vecchio's job, the CEO. But I am representing Legislative District Five and the Omaha Federation of Labor. And I will be coming back. But I appreciate every dollar you've given and any dollar you potentially are going to give into the future.
No questions. Do you want to close? I might just thank you for your efforts. And, you know, I have participated in almost every district, because you don't think of it as your district. You think of it as Douglas County, and whatever we can do. And this is important for jobs. And that's what it's really about. And Mike, I want to thank you and your organization on a constant basis, not just this issue, and what you do in our community. And I know last week you were in Florida helping out, and I really respect that greatly. I'm disappointed. I almost withdrew my money because you didn't ask me to go with you and drive straight through. But I decided not to do.
Well, the work's not done, Commissioner. You could go the next time.
I was going to take Maureen with me to help participate in that effort. But thank you again.
Well, thank you for your service. I know it's not, it's not easy, and serving on appropriations for the state. I know the phone never stops ringing, and there's a lot of good causes out there. And, but again, we appreciate every dollar. I will be, I will be back. And next time, I'm hoping Jim Vecchio can be here. Again, he had a family commitment. But I will be here to answer any questions and to make sure if there's anything you need from us, I'll be available to try to, try to answer it if I can answer it at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Senator, thanks. Do you, so let me get this straight. You're $250,000 short, correct, of the original commitment?
Yeah, if you, yes, if you approve this $300,000 today, yes, we are.
Okay. Telling you something you already know, the first round of, I wanted your opinion on this. The first round of ARPA money has essentially been appropriated. All the commissioners got a certain amount to actually deal with some of the issues and some of the things that they could deal with in their, in their own way. And then the whole entire board had to approve it. The money going forward has, for all intents and purposes, been earmarked. Just so we're clear, you're, you'd like, you need $250,000 more. Is it, is it simply, are you in a, are you in a massive fundraising effort right now? Or is it simply a deal where you'd like to go back to the previous amount of ARPA money and try to figure out exactly where that, the rest of that appropriation is going to come from because you didn't anticipate all of that, right? I mean, or is it both of the above?
It's both.
Okay, all right. All right, that's, that's troubling. I think, in my opinion is, and I think I said this a long time ago, when we dispersed originally a certain amount of ARPA money, or we appropriated a certain amount of ARPA money to each commissioner, I suspected that it would be strange. I didn't expect it would be this strange. So I want to tell you, I regret the situation that you're in. But continue the dialogue, I guess, and let's try to figure out exactly where we can go with it. But it's unfortunate. It's unfortunate.
Because I had a commitment from Commissioner Kavanaugh, I did not pursue that discussion with the rest of you board members. And I regret that. But here I am. And again, it's my problem to solve. But I do appreciate any dollar that you would be willing to give to this project and help us complete the fundraising.
Thank you, Mike.
I see no other lights or comments. There is a, there is a motion and a second. There is a hand on Zoom. Chief Deputy Hudson?
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Senator McDonald, thank you again for the program that you mentioned. From a law enforcement standpoint, having individuals come from a Christian institution and return to the community, and having jobs for them is really good for us. Because then, if they have jobs, then we're going to see less recidivism, which is great. My question to you is, are you keeping stats on how many people you're helping, and if they're still in the trades after one year, two years, three years? Are you keeping stats on that?
Yes, we are. And I can share those with you. We have, going back to February of 2021, we believe we have good stats. And we keep the quarterly numbers, and we can release those to the public.
That's good. I would like to see that if they're public documents. I'd like to see that. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Okay, I see no other lights or hands. Please vote.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next, we will move to human resources, the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. And we have no legislative items at this time, other than on Thursday, I'll be attending. Senator McDonald was gracious enough to take on the interim study to take a look at our behavioral health system and how it's founded, funded, and the resources that we currently have, and what possibly are some next steps that we could work with on the state. So I'll be down there for that hearing. But again, since he's here, thank you again for taking that interim study on. And other than that, we don't have any other legislative items.
Madam Chair, sorry to interrupt, but.
Yeah, I see. I see no other legislative items at this time. Did you have something on legislation?
Well, it can't be anything specific because it's not on the agenda. But you do represent us down there, I think. I hope. You should be representing us. So I want to mention about the, the election, the upcoming election. What was presented last week or the last meeting by Douglas County Election Commissioner left some things out that I think citizens need to be informed about. So I expect you to ask the state to maybe go on the public airwaves to explain the write-in candidate process for voting. There apparently is a lot of misunderstanding amongst even our election workers as to whether or not there needs to be a line on the ballot and a little circle for write-in candidates. We do have one that has established a campaign. But he's being told by different sources that people that want to vote for him have to put his full name in the, on the ballot. Apparently, that's not so according to the law in Nebraska. He, the person, I will not use his name right now. You can pay attention to the news, and you might find out, you might not, because they don't cover it either. But according to his research out of the Nebraska statutes, writing in the full name is not necessary. It will be counted as a vote. But we did not have any discussion in these chambers about, and there are no sample ballots that talk about write-in candidates, or the line on the ballot for a candidate. So I'm only saying, this is one of those things. Maybe it's an education or something, truth to knowledge, that because of things like this, an election can get stolen, or there can be a lot of irregularities that need to be challenged. But those people that challenge those things are called violent. And we're getting tired of it. When our government refuses to answer us, we have a right to alter it. And that's what the Fifth Amendment is about. Not another revolution, but asking you to alter our government for us. Thank you.
I need to ask Chief Deputy Hudson a question real quick. I just saw that there was a note that you wanted the Millard Public Schools item held over till a later date. Wayne, are you there?
Teresa Yuric, County Attorney's Office. I did have communications with Chief Hudson, and he may be having technical difficulties. I believe that was only if there was going to be additional questions. And I spoke with you right before the board meeting, and I think all questions were answered. And so I don't think it'll be a problem that it was passed today. However, I will follow up with Chief Hudson again after the meeting. But I think we're fine.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Hello?
Oh, Chief, hi, Wayne.
Yes, I stuck away for a second.
I just noticed that there had been a note that I did not see until this moment, that you wanted the agenda item 2A, the Millard Public Schools item, held over till a later date. But, and we voted on that. And so I needed to know if we needed to reconsider that.
No, that was only if we could not come to some type of agreement. But since I provide that information to Commissioner Boyle, she's satisfied. So no, we're good to go.
Okay, all right. That's what Teresa Yuric relayed to us. So that's good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
With that, we do have need for an executive session for union negotiations, personnel, and litigation. Anything else? Okay. Is there a motion to go into executive session for those purposes? Please vote. A motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Motion passes six to zero.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle to reconvene and adjourn. Second by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. We are adjourned at 11:30, 9:00 AM.
(Music)